This meeting is a meeting of the school board and public for the purpose of conducting the school corporation's business. It is not, it is not to be considered a public community meeting. There may be time for public participation as indicated by agenda item or as directed by the president. Meeting site is fully accessible. Any person requiring further accommodations should contact the superintendent at the school corporation's central office. The meeting will be electronically recorded, will be kept on file in superintendent's office. A copy of the audio recording will also be available on the NLCS website. Website address is www.nlcs.k12.in.us. The call meeting to order, and I'll let the record reflect that all board members are present. Then rise and uncover, say the pledge. First, please say the pledge.
(inaudible) religions to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Review for approval minutes, an executive session memorandum from February 22nd, 2022, and executive session memorandum from February 3rd, 2022. Entertainer motion? Mr. Gerdes makes the motion, a second.
Second.
Mr. Bennett, second, it's the motion. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, signature of the public saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Thank you. Moving on, item D, persons to address the board relative to the agenda. If you wish to make public comments on items relative to the agenda, please place a completed comment card on the podium prior to the start of the meeting. As a reminder, during public comments, the board administration will not be answering questions, and there's a three-minute time limit. First up, Ms. Eve Collingsworth.
(inaudible) because I ramble. Hi, my name is Ms. Eve Collingsworth. I'm a parent at Shawswig Elementary and a former Shawswig Middle School. Before buying a house and becoming a parent, I became a substitute teacher for NLCS. It's been a couple decades. I served at most of the elementary schools and middle schools. I did this because my husband and I wanted to know where we would like to raise our children in as far as a school community, because that's what school is to me and to my family. Growing up, I wanted something, if you wanted something to do, you could almost guarantee that you could find something happening in one of two places, your church or your school. And I wanted my boys to attend one school before B&amp;L and one school only, so we chose Shawswig without hesitation. And I wonder how many Olytic parents are feeling the same. I don't speak a lot, I attend board meetings, I volunteer at my son's school, and I help. I do think you'd be hard-pressed to find another parent as involved in a school in NLCS, not a sport or a club, but a whole school volunteer, because every student, teacher, and staff member who walks those halls needs to know that they are appreciated. I want my son to know that school is important, and what better way than showing him that his school is important to me? And I know how fortunate we are that we got to choose to live in the school community that fits my family. And as far as the proposed consolidation, I think choice is a good topic that I don't think was covered. When you hear of school choice, you hear of leaving a school corporation, an entire corporation for a private school, a charter school, or to homeschool. But there's also school choice within NLCS. Dr. Muggle spoke at the January meeting about some OMS parents were already transferring their students to BMS, and I know there were many more transfers approved each year between all of the schools. Sometimes it fits a family's work schedule or aftercare options, but most times it's done out of the best interest of their child. Maybe they're struggling with a teacher's teaching style versus their learning style, most likely they're struggling with peer interactions, and the best thing for that student is to attend another school within NLCS. I worry that closing Olytic Middle School takes that away from some students. They lose that chance for a fresh start. When we transferred our oldest out of a small Christian school into NLCS in seventh grade, we toured BMS and we toured Shawswig, because I wanted him to have school choice. And I was told on our tour in Bedford by BMS staff, if you have the choice, choose Shawswig. That speaks volumes. When the use of e-learning days for teacher training, why can't teachers from BMS and OMS still collaborate on those days? At the December 2019 board meeting, when the middle school revised consolidation plan was presented with keeping OMS open, Dr. Muggle proudly said, "This new plan will continue to provide increased opportunities for students and staff collaboration. This will alleviate capacity concerns, traffic concerns for BMS, and eliminate the need to remodel the annex building at BMS," end quote. Yet, at the OMS parent meeting recently, he spoke of concerns of unequal experiences for students. Dr. Muggle also said at that meeting, "We are reducing teachers to other positions or attrition." Is that what this boils down to, attrition? The retirement, or key point, the quitting of qualified staff? NLCS cannot hire or retain enough teachers to fill positions? Is that what's behind the true closing of OMS? We need those teachers to fill other vacancies? Then the real question stands firm, why are we losing quality educators and why aren't we doing anything about it? I might not make a difference today, but at least I want to try. My son only has a couple years left at Shawswig, so I'll do my best over the next few years to show my former family love through community events, teacher appreciation, food drives, and high fives with students. And that's where our time with NLCS will end. It'll come to a close because my school choice was removed. You keep throwing around the hashtag "we are NLCS," but please remember that the C stands for community, and that is the real heart of NLCS. You together aren't NLCS, I am, the parents behind me are. We are NLCS. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Donna Garber.
Okay, I'm, I'm not, well, okay. I think I'm in a different category, but that's fine. Okay, I want to talk about custodian departments, the people that have left. What happened to the money that would have paid those wages? What about the incentive we used to get? What about the days that we were taking, that were taken from us? We never recoup that loss as promised. Now the wording has been changed in the handbook, "We don't earn our vacation time, you give them to us." Now, it's been the other way for years. I don't know why it was changed. We, you offered overtime as much as we wanted, but very few people took it. Because of short staffing, some of us need to do two or more jobs, not because we have the time, but because there's no care. We don't get extra pay, not appreciated, we're tired, but we do it because we care. Now, the cleaning company that everybody's talked about, they need to make a profit. Any business needs to make a profit. North Lawrence doesn't need to make a profit. After-school programs, sports, concerts, are they going to take care of all that? What about background checks? Who's going to be responsible for that? Who's going to make sure that our students and staff are safe? You're buying new equipment, floor scrubbers, side-by-sides, et cetera. Dr. Muggle said these companies would bring their own equipment and supplies. Why are we spending the money on new equipment? Now, if it's a case of you have to use it or lose it, I totally get that. But if you have to lose it or use it or lose it, what happened to the money that was earmarked for staff that wasn't used? Did you use it? Did we lose it? If we used it, where did that money go? Why not spend the money on the staff? Why not give the custodial staff what they used to have, respect, dignity, and a decent wage? We don't have to make a profit. Restore us to what we used to be, you know, a clean, safe school. Our schools aren't clean anymore. I'm embarrassed. I am totally embarrassed. There is two nighttime custodians at B&amp;L. Now, you all know how big B&amp;L is. Two. What do you think we can do? Now, I left tonight, so that's about six hours that I lost to be here tonight. So that means there's six hours' worth of stuff that I can't do, and I don't do everything. I walk into a room, I don't clean the boards, I don't straighten up the desks, I don't dust, which I know people say, "Well, dusting isn't that big deal," but it is. It's important. I vacuum twice a week, if possible. I clean the desks twice a week, if possible. The other day, I was asked to go upstairs to the third floor and clean four bathrooms. That took two hours off of my floor. So that's two hours' worth of items that I didn't get to do, you know? And it just keeps building, because then, when I get back to my area, it's twice as much for me, you know? Granted, the other guy is sick, you know, our supervisor helps out whenever possible. I, I just, you know, I understand this cleaning company, but from what I hear, it is not the answer, you know? You have lost so many incredible people, you know, so many incredible people. And what for? Because the wage wasn't good? Because you only hire them for 190 days? You know, you can make more money, like I said when I was here once before, don't know if you remember, I made more money at Walmart than I did for North Lawrence, and I was only there two years. North Lawrence, 26 years. So, you know, I'm just begging you, please, look things over, think about, you know, talk to some of us, you guys, talk to some of us custodians, ask us what we need, what we want, what we desire, because a lot of us want to stay and a lot of us don't. We, we want out, you know, because you're not giving us anything. And I, I'm done now, but I did want to give a shout-out to Needmore School Robotics. They made 10th out of 110 schools, they were in the top 12, so they go to world competition. I don't know if you guys know that? World competition. That's got to be in Dallas, Texas. I mean, you know, yeah, sports is great, but these kids, you know, are, you know, new scientists, new executives, new whatever, you know, they can be whatever they want, but 10th out of 110, I mean, amazing. Anyway, thank you all for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next up, Ross Lester.
Good evening. My name is Ross Lester, and I'm here tonight urging you to vote no to the closure of Olytic Middle School. My wife Kristen and I grew up here and are both proud graduates of North Lawrence Community Schools. We're incredibly thankful for the hard-working and dedicated teachers, staff, and administrators that poured into us in our formative years. We could never repay them for the many sacrifices they endured because they saw the long-term potential in us. After graduating from college, my career took us away from home for many years. We always had a strong desire that if career opportunities presented themselves in a line, we would move back to this community, a community that had been so good to us. When that opportunity presented itself, we were excited to take it. As is the case with several families moving into our communities, our jobs are both in Monroe County, so we settled on the north side of Lawrence County. Given our previous excellent educational experience, the thought of sending our child anywhere else other than NLCS never crossed our minds. That is, until the most recent proposal, the first consolidation, was brought forth, ushering into our community the fear of schools closing in our community and the prospect of a massive disruption that our child and other children at NLCS would surely have to endure. Now, less than two years after the original plan of keeping only one of our middle schools open failed due to strong objection from our community, this option is being considered yet again. The decision to close Olytic Middle School, which serves Marshall Township, one of our fastest-growing townships in our community, is bound to negatively impact the growth of the county as a whole. Many families such as ours, working in surrounding counties like Monroe or Green and choosing to live in Lawrence, will be forced to seek other educational options, as proposals like these continue to isolate families and drive public education options further away from home. There is a reason that we are called North Lawrence Community Schools and not Bedford Community Schools. Since the most recent consolidation, NLCS has seen a significant decrease in enrollment. The most recent decline cost NLCS approximately $1 million in lost revenue. Given the loss of trust sparked in the community during the last consolidation, this proposal will certainly only continue to drive a decrease in student enrollment, further diminishing associated funding. How much more can NLCS afford to lose if you vote yes to this consolidation? These statements are based on facts, supported by data, and so far in the discussions, it appears we're very light on both. There's been no data presented that leverages any lessons learned or even attempts to affirm if the previous consolidation achieved any of the desired objectives. We've only heard that OMS is unsustainable and the only potential solution is to close it. At the February 15th board meeting, Mr. Hudson stated, "We don't want to continue with two middle schools, we only want one." One can only conclude from a comment like that, that in their opinion, OMS is unsustainable because they don't want it to be fixed. Taking a more objective look, according to chalkbeat.org, OMS has had consistently higher I-Learn test scores in all categories than BMS. The problems that OMS are facing are because the time, effort, and resources were not put into place for OMS to succeed as a part of the earlier consolidation. Once again, we don't even seem to have a sense as to whether or not the last consolidation even worked. That should be a prerequisite before entertaining another one. Have we considered the potential for other root causes to the problems or solely attributed them to OMS because it aligns with the original consolidation plan? One simple example that relates to the issue around the low number of students at OMS participating in band and/or choir. This has totally been attributed to an OMS problem, when research would point us to look at the impact of pulling such extracurricular activities from the elementary schools, and that as a key impact on future students. This is one simple example that illustrates the overarching concern that the administration has not really even tried to garner a good understanding of the potential root causes of the problems and viable solutions to solve them. Instead of closing an entire school and disrupting the lives of 167 students to eliminate problems, let's make sure that we really understand the root causes and evaluate the best options to fix them. Lastly, as I wrap up, I want to address some of the concerns we've heard after speaking with fellow parents. Many have said that they think the decision is already a done deal. It doesn't matter if they come to the meeting or not, because the decision's already been made, regardless of its merits. Some feel their opinion doesn't matter, it didn't matter during the first closure, so why would it matter now? Still, others feel that their kids may be penalized somehow if they speak out. The decision was made two years ago for OMS to stay open, but here we are again proposing to close it. I assure you, people care about this decision, and they will respond by enrolling their children in other institutions. Potential and current teachers also care about this decision and are watching. What would draw a potential teacher to our school system for lower pay and the insecurity around whether or not their school will even remain open in the long term? The question to you is, are you going to continue to be responsible for driving enrollment in NLCS down by forcing parents to seek other options? Don't you think those kids that I mentioned at the start, with all that potential, and the teachers that work tirelessly every day because they see that potential, deserve to have the time and effort put in to fully understand what the problems really are and careful and complete consideration of all the potential solutions to solve them? We do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Scott King.
Good evening. I'm also opposed to the recommendation for all 7th and 8th grade students to attend Bedford Middle School campus beginning of 2022, 2023 school year. I was a little disappointed to see it on the nice t頑 again. If there really is a problem with the middle schools, it's because after the school board agreed that the consolidation would include two middle schools, administration failed in its effort to provide the necessary resources to ensure that the corporation had two quality middle schools. And I say if there's really a problem, because I think the current assessment of OMS has not really identified a single significant teacher or student problem that would justify transferring these students and closing OMS, and nothing that would warrant the negative impact that such action would have on the students, their parents, and the community. And not only have no significant problems identified, but there's still no comprehensive plan that explains how the transfer would even be executed, and there is no plan or analysis that offers any evidence that the transfer and closure would solve the single problem. I find it interesting that the goals the administration is using to close Olytic Middle School are some of the same goals of a consolidation. This looks good in a presentation, but in truth, there is no proof that any of the projected benefits of the consolidation have been met. Mr. Bailey asked in the working group meeting on the 15th, "Do we have any lessons learned from the consolidation?" And the answer is, "We have no lessons learned." Just last week, I was in the meeting with Dr. Muggle, and I asked him specifically if the corporation had met its objectives to end the consolidation, and his response was, "To be honest, Scott, I have no idea." No problems have been clearly identified, there is no plan that someone can execute or follow, the results of similar decisions in the past have not been evaluated. So I think the recommendation to close OMS and transfer the students is a poor solution to a problem that may not even exist. There was one thing, however, that closing OMS and the consolidation would have in common. An obvious result of consolidation is a decrease in student enrollment. If this recommendation is approved, then enrollment will decrease even more. The chance of people going elsewhere is 100%. There aren't hundreds of people attending the school board meetings, and there aren't hundreds of people posting about this on Facebook, but there are hundreds of people paying attention to what's going on, both inside and outside the community, including prospective employees. Do you honestly believe that treating these students and their parents this way will make the corporation more attractive to teachers, and do you honestly believe it'll be easier to retain them? So tonight, I'm asking you to do the right thing. I believe that each of you knows that this recommendation is wrong. I'm asking you to do the right thing. Don't vote according to someone else's agenda. Don't penalize students for the lack of effort from the administration. Don't make a bad, short-term decision based on the false promise of a long-term benefit. Do the right thing and vote no on the recommendation. Thank you.
Next up, Joe Timbrough.
What's up? Can I have your mind at the end?
It's a, okay, all right, I see that, sorry. Moving on, item E, business services.
Mr. President, board, I have for you tonight, board's approval of claims of $3,184,611.54.
Mr. Lambert makes the motion in a second. Mr. Gerdes, second, it's the motion, questions on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, signature of the public saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item F, curriculum, Mrs. Thane.
First, I have before you the approval of the purchase and installation of the B&amp;L access points and district battery backups. This was done through a bid process, and the scope of the work may not all be needed, but it was bidded, and the e-rate funds applied as needed.
Entertain a motion? Mr. Lambert makes the motion in a second. Mr. Gerdes, second, it's the motion, questions on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, signature of the public saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
And then next, the approval of HMH into math as the adopted series for the K5 math curriculum for the next six years.
Entertain a motion?
All move.
Mr. Lambert makes the motion in a second.
Okay.
Mr. Gerdes, second, it's the motion, questions on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, signature of the public saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Thank you. Item G, Mrs. Windsor.
Thank you. I would first like to present the personnel consent agenda as listed for your approval.
Entertain a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Gerdes makes the motion in a second. Mr. Gerdes, second, it's the motion, questions on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, signature of the public saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Thank you.
And I just have a few retirements, new retirements, to point out. Lisa Deckard, art teacher, has been with us for 29 years at NLCS. William Deckard, middle school instructor, has been with NLCS for 36 years. Cheryl Gross, NLCS speech-language pathologist, has been with us for 31 years. And Mark Ryan is retiring after 29 years of service with NLCS. A lot of years, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Item H.
First up, I have approval appointment to the Bedford redevelopment commission. Mr. Bailey?
Entertain a motion?
All move.
Mr. Lambert makes the motion in a second.
Second.
Mr. Gerdes, second, it's the motion, questions on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, signature of the public saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Thank you.
Next up, approval of out-of-state field trip to Bowling Green, Kentucky for the FFA program to Western Kentucky.
Entertain a motion to approve?
All move.
Mr. Bennett makes the motion in a second.
Second.
Lambert, second, it's the motion, questions on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, signature of the public saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Thank you.
Next up, Mr. President, I would like to, you know, share just a few comments, and I think as far as one of the different goals and many of the things we tried to accomplish with, with the schools, as far as all of our students have the same opportunities in all of our schools at this time, all of the elementary schools. And that was not the case before we went through, and, and I think that was a hardship that we looked at in some of our smaller elementary schools. The, all of the teachers now have at least a, you know, teaching partner, where many of our teachers were teaching in isolation. We've also made an effort to provide additional support for those teachers, I think professional development or just support, as far as reading specialists and instructional coaches in those schools, because as we know, it was an effort of all of ours to increase our letter grades in our schools, and then we, then we had several schools that that needed to be a focus as we looked across the entire district. We do know with, from the state reports that we were filing, is that we were spending way too much money on operations. We were spending 21% of the funds that we received from the state in operations, and we needed to decrease that to 15%. It's taken a few years to get there, but this budget year, that we will be at 15%. I think in doing that, we have been able to increase the salary and benefits of the teachers. Not as quick, or maybe not as best as we had hoped, but if we look at the additional money that has been put on the weight, salary, and benefits in both areas with what we've done with our support staff and even our teachers, that, that number has increased. We had numerous years that it was just a stipend, and I think last year with a full-step increase on the salary schedule, and obviously, yes, we were in We had numerous years, um, that it was just a stipend. And I think last year with a full step increase on the salary schedule, um, and obviously, yes, we were impacted this year with a large insurance, uh, increase that took some of that. I am very hopeful, and I know in conversations with the NLEA, that we are hopeful as we look at this year and we're going to start proceeding, um, that we will be able to make some strides in that area. And one of the other things, a lot of our schools did not have after-school programs. And I think we wanted to make sure that all of our schools have the opportunity for after-school programs. Obviously, we do that in relationship with the Boys and Girls Club, that every school, we offer that program, um, where the students have that opportunity for those parents that are working and no longer maybe have to drive to a different location. We were able to reduce bus cost, uh, you know, by redoing all of the bus routes. We reduced, um, twelve, twelve bus routes, twelve buses, um, as we went through that consolidation. Obviously, that was a big factor that drove down some of our operational costs. And I think most importantly, and, and we were able to add a couple of programs that did not exist at North Lawrence schools before. One was the Early Learning Center, um, uh, down the hill. And we have the waiting list and, and that is a goal, I think, as we prepare ourselves and as you've probably seen. And I think some of the funding that is coming our way and the importance of pre-K and early childhood education, North Lawrence is very well situated, um, by having up to three hundred students in that school, um, pre-kindergarten up to infants. Lastly, I think also we started the Gateway Academy. We knew the graduation rate at the high school was an area of focus and it needed to be addressed. And the Gateway Academy, um, don't have the exact number, but I know we're on target again this year to help approximately twenty to twenty-five, uh, students graduate and receive their diplomas. And, and it was one of the major increases with our graduation rate at the high school. So many of the goals were accomplished. And I think, you know, we were focused on those goals. And I think most importantly, um, it was, we didn't want to leave any of our children behind. And I think in making this decision, you know, and bringing this recommendation to the board this evening, it was not one that I made in isolation. And it was one that I made after multiple teachers and administrators, counselors that worked with those students and built the schedule, that at the final point, I said, we need to take this recommendation to the board. And we need to let the community know that with the current number of students that we have, it takes so many to have course offerings. It takes so many students to run a middle school. We do have some smaller middle schools in our area, some of our smaller school districts in our area. But those, those middle schools or junior highs are seven through twelve buildings. They don't stand in isolation. If you look at the number of students that maybe attend a Shoals or an Orleans or some of those others. And it's very difficult to have that. So I think most importantly, we just wanted to be honest and truthful. And we know for many of the parents, maybe the band is not the program that is primary emphasis. Or maybe the computer class, or maybe whatever class it may be. But I do know we need to have those different elective opportunities. Students do not spend their entire day in a math, English, science, and social studies class like they would with a traditional elementary teacher. So that is our concern currently, right now, Olytic, we have eight core academic teachers in that building. It has been a challenge to find teachers. And we've done our very best, um, to find teachers. And, and we've been blessed to have a retired teacher come back and others. But, uh, we are looking for teachers at for OMS currently. Our concern is, and, and we have held our own this year, and we have had traveling elective teachers. And we've tried to offer everything. But with the current staffing, we know that may not be the possibility. And we don't want you to be surprised as a board that those students at OMS may not have all of those opportunities. Because we are sometimes limited by what that teacher can teach or what that teacher is able to offer as far as the electives. And in doing that, we wanted to have those conversations. Also, we have the larger number at BMS, and we understand that. And we've made, as, as many of you know, when we didn't have enough students or athletes to play volleyball, we bust those students to BMS to give them that opportunity. I mean, there was multiple sports where we'd bust them over to BMS. And we will still do our very best to bust those students over and participate. But for the other electives, we can't bust those students. Athletics happens after hours. It's above and beyond the school day. But it is very hard to bust those students over for an elective. Most importantly, I just wanted, you know, we have shared, and I know Ms., Mrs. Dayton has some comments and obviously has spent time looking at multiple schedules, looking at different things. It's no surprise, we know that we need to do more, offer better. And, and when we looked at the letter grades, we knew on the list that Mr. Hudson provided us as a board, there was twenty-some junior highs. There was two schools on that list that had D scores back to two thousand and eighteen. That was the last time they gave the letter grades. At one time, one was a failing school. It's been in targeted school improvement. Some of the challenges is the size of the school and the opportunities that we provide. Not all of the score is truly just based on the student growth, but some of the opportunities you provide those students. And we want more, we want the opportunities. And, and we do have some students, and we have, that have transferred. But, and, and we have done our very best at all of our schools to allow those transfers. But it is sometimes a challenge on that school that absorbs that many more students. Because the students transfer, but the staff doesn't transfer. The number of teachers don't transfer. So sometimes that school ends up with larger class sizes and larger, um, you know, with some of the staffing, because you can't just adjust all. So I bring you that tonight as far as, um, you know, most importantly, it is about the students. That's why we're here every day. It's providing those same opportunities. Just like those opportunities we set out that all five elementaries would have the same opportunities, that they'd have a school nurse, that they'd have a counselor, that they, that, that those teachers and students would have the same opportunities in the five elementary schools. And in sharing this tonight, it's just being truthful and very honest that we don't know exactly, um, some of those electives. We do know that the enrollment, the population in our schools, even at the elementary levels, is decreasing. You know, we have one third grade class with only, how many is in that class?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. So we have twenty-five third graders in Olytic. Well, in just a few years, they're going to be in junior high. And, and that's gonna be a very small seventh grade class. But, um, I, I just share that with you. Mrs. Dayton, would you like to share anything? Obviously, I know it's a difficult decision, but I think we owe it to our parents, we owe it to the students. To be very truthful and honest, um, that this recommendation is done in listening to, listening from our teachers and listening from our administrators and listening from our counselors, um, and providing the very best opportunities we can for our students. And that's why I bring you the recommendation tonight. Mrs. Dayton.
I guess I thank you for your consideration. I know, um, this is a difficult decision. One of the main factors is planning for this to be proactive and to provide all of the same opportunities, which we have been able to do up until this point to our students. If, if OMS students stay at OMS, we will have to continue, uh, or we will have to offer different things at both schools. We cannot continue to offer the same things to our OMS students, at, at our BMS students. The staffing just doesn't match up. Um, I know, uh, band was the example used in the presentation and it's kind of gotten traction. But looking at numbers, the PE class at Olytic has eight students in it. And the project lead, the weight class, has seven students in it. The consumer science class has eleven students in it. So that band choir and orchestra was one example that we gave. But it's not about growing the program. It's about the number of students in the building to be able to offer those opportunities. To have a family and consumer science teacher at Olytic two periods a day that we can't keep, we can't keep them busy all day. So we can't, we wouldn't be able to provide that opportunity for the students at Olytic. We want to provide all the opportunities for all the students, the same opportunities. And that is why we want to combine them into one location so that those students would have access to all of the same things. And that it would be planned for intentionally. If they, if they stay at OMS and students then choose BMS, we aren't able to plan for them to be there because we don't know what students will choose to go there. Over the last couple of years with COVID, we've been, had to be reactive on many situations. And this is something that we bring to you in an effort to be proactive, to continue to offer, um, offer all. And I just want to make it clear that if it is, if it does not go through, it is not because we don't, you didn't vote yes, and now we want to take those things away from Olytic students, because that is not it. It is because we cannot continue to offer them. And I think that is, um, just something I, I want to make very clear that it is not, um, we would not be out to hurt those students or do anything against them. It would just be that we could not continue to offer the same things, so.
We'll entertain a motion to approve the recommendation.
I make a motion to approve the recommendation by the administration.
Mr. Bailey makes the motion in a second.
Second.
Mr. Bennett seconds the motion. Questions on the motion? If you have a vote in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion's not passed.
Just for the record, uh, hands, I guess.
I, I really appreciate Maggie's passion. She's just wonderful. And I appreciate Mr. Hedgen's work and Mrs. Taylor's. Everybody worked really hard to, in a real quick amount of time to try to answer all of our questions and get plans together. And I really appreciate all the work and I really appreciate your passion for our kids. Again, that's, that's why we do it. I want to do what's best for most of, we want to do what's best for our kids. I just, this was, this wasn't right, right now. This isn't saying that in the future this might have to happen. I don't know. I mean, a lot of stuff is numbers driven. If we don't have the staff, I don't want to see these kids miss out on our kids. But I just think the timing was really bad right now with everything our kids have been through. And especially when some, some kids, this would be like their fourth or fifth school change in four and five years. I just can't put, do that. And so, I mean, that's just kind of where I'm coming from. I know we never really get a chance to explain why we vote one way or the other, so I'm just throwing that out. And I know we're not really, that's not really what it's supposed to do. But I just want to be clear that I do appreciate all the work that our, that our administration has put into this. But that's why I just couldn't go forward with it right now.
Thank you. Moving on, I'd like to address the board. I admire. Mr. Timbrough.
Good evening. Uh, thank you for letting, uh, come again just to address the board for a couple of minutes. I'll try to stay in my three minutes. But I am Joe Timbrough, Director of Career Development for the Lawrence County Economic Growth Council. I just want to make sure that you are aware of some of the things that are happening within the school system and within the commu-, uh, community that are very positive when it comes to workforce and education. First of all, we've talked about the Community Impact Investment Grant that we received from IU Health. We're partners from the school system and the administration in New All. We appreciate that. Originally, we had a one-point-seven million dollar ask. We were up to almost seven-hundred thousand dollars in receipts, including the IU, um, health grant and matching funds of almost four-hundred thousand dollars. We signed our agreement with IU Health today. And so we can move forward. In that grant has a lot of, um, things for the career center. It has a lot of things for, um, the curriculum and the ways that, um, um, will help Maggie do what she needs to do with our systems and that kind of thing in the school. So we're very excited about that, and you'll see more now finally we're able to, to get moving on it. Also, um, we, I also want to talk about HSE program, high school equivalency. People, you know it as the GED program, but, um, high school equivalency is, is what it is. Had lots of conversations about, um, graduation rates. Twenty-five hundred people in Lawrence County that do not have a high school diploma and, um, what to do about that and what does the system look like? Um, is we've been, um, very proactive with the school system on how do we, how do we fix that? We're having a record year again for doing, having high school equivalencies to have completed in Lawrence County. And we just are in the middle of a high, um, HSE boot camp, if you've been seeing anything about that. To actually where we have twelve people going through an intensive three-day, um, uh, way of getting their high school equivalency. Twelve people in, in one weekend is more than we got in a ye-, in a year before. So we're really excited about that. We keep piloting different things to see what works and what doesn't work. But, but that looks very successful. We'll know more, um, in about ten days or so, once, once they, um, take their test and, and, and move forward from there. So that is important to us. The high school, um, graduation rate is important to us because we're trying to, we're trying to take care of the ones that are already out there. So we don't want bucket to get any, any bigger. So we're, we're continuing to work forward with that, and that also is part of the IU Health, um, grant as well. So, um, we'll continue those kind of things. One thing that I think is really important, just is from a collaboration standpoint, and if you, um, I hope you realize what it takes for a large community to try to all be moving forward at the same time, doing, doing the same things that, that may, so we're not duplicating and replicating things. I've been doing this work now for four years, and, um, collaboration's hard. There's no question about that. And, uh, but with, um, the school system, working with, with Maggie, Christie before, when, um, she was involved in a lot of the things that we were doing, and of course, Dr. Munkel, um, we're, we're able to, um, we've got thirty, we've got thirty partners, at least, and there's a whole, a whole lot more. And we were, and I, I want to be sure I use the right words with some of this, but, um, we were granted a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant from, um, Ascendium and Civic Lab to help us be able to work better as a, a group. And if we were one of five, we're out in the United States. The other ones are from New Mexico, California, Florida, and Texas. And it's a two-year project. Maggie has been allowed to join us on the writing team for that, and it's going to really create some outstanding results. But really, um, not necessarily programmatic stuff, but really how just to get it done and the way to get it done stuff. And so we're really excited about that. There, there is some funds to do some projects, um, within it, but a lot of it's just how to, how to do it and how to collaborate and how to get it done. And so, um, you, a lot of her to attend a day and a half or two days of, uh, work with us in March, and we're back in April over in Columbus doing that again. But I think you will see throughout, um, our community over the, over the next couple of years, that we will get better and better at doing things intentionally, like the school system is trying to do, and providing the very best educational opportunities for every single kid and adult in Lawrence County. So I thank you for your support, and if you ever have any questions, you know how to get along with me. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Thanks, Bill. Moving on, or no other person's addressed the board, I don't have any other cards, so. Moving on, item J, closing business, upcoming meetings. There'll be an executive session at five fifteen P M on Thursday, April seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, at the N L C S administration building. There'll be an executive session at five fifteen P M and regular session at six thirty P M on Thursday, April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, at the N L C S administration building. Next up, entertain a motion to adjourn. Bennett makes the motion in a second. Mr. Gregory seconds the motion, questions on the motion, seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Close. Same.